Good morning. This is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners' Court. Twenty-fourth day of October 2013 is now about 8:32 a.m. As we do all meetings, we will start with a brief moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag. I'd like to ask Mr. Gail Armstrong to lead us in those two pledges right after the moment of silence, okay? Please rise.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, let us do this deeply: Texas wants to stand under God, one individual.
Public comment. Consent items.
Just want to bring to the court's attention a publication that is done by the Texas Department of Transportation. It's called Wingtips, and we were featured in this month's newsletter, I guess is what it's called. They have a nice article about, well, they have a quarterly newsletter. It goes out to all the airports, pilots, and anyone else interested in aviation across the state of Texas and anywhere else in the U.S. There's a nice article about our airport in there. At your convenience, take a look at it. I think it puts us in good light in regard to the amenities we have in Cameron County.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other public comment? Consent? I've been asked to table or clarify a couple of items. On item L, approving that MOU between Cameron County and BISD, subject to Section 3.2. So if, when we approve that, we can do it subject to that. Item M to table.
M as in Mary?
M as in Mary. Double O to table. Double P, changing the date from 11/5 to 11/4. Tabling double Z. And that's all for consent.
Double Z.
Anything else? Renee?
Your Honor, on double T, the dates are incorrect on the table. The date that filed would be November 18 through November 20. The dates are actually correct on the back up.
Okay, with that change going from October to November. Thank you. Anything else?
I, uh, letter C and E.
To take out and discuss?
Yes.
C and E?
C and E.
Anything else?
Hold on. Triple Q.
Triple Q to discuss?
Yes.
Also on the supplemental, there's a consent item regarding the use of the, uh, of the Lucio Clinic also to be tabled. Anything else?
I make a motion to approve the, uh, all these items that we accept with the ones that have been pulled.
I hear motion. To approve consent is presented with the exception of the item to be tabled or subject to, or the changes. By Commissioner Nandez, and by Commissioner Gottsa. Any discussion? All those in favor is thinking about by saying aye in your post. Carries. Item C, consideration approval of increasing the Cam- the Cameron County Impress Fund to $50,000. Was that the email that you sent out last week regarding?
Yes.
The increase?
What, what? What is the reason behind it, Martha, for increasing it at this point in time?
Increasing it? Um, invariably, sometimes when we have a large number of employees, county employees, traveling and we issue advances, uh, those advances are supposed to be accounted for upon their return within a week. Sometimes they do not, and, uh, sometimes at the, at the same, during that same time period, we will have people from adult probation traveling, which is always a lot of advances when they go through the, the advance claim fund. Uh, we have a large number of county employees traveling, and that puts us in, um, in a real, in a real bind as to being able to cover the advances that we are giving.
So, so the, this $30,000 that we have?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
Yes.
That's working capital?
Correct.
And it gets used and replenished constantly?
Yes.
Correct?
At every meeting, it gets replenished.
So, so basically, we're, we're at any one point, we could have more than $35,000 out and travel at a time?
At, at times, we do, yes.
Okay.
I know we ran across that this month because we had a lot of the courts traveling. We had a lot of, uh, travel from year ending, uh, September that was still out, had not been accounted for. So we, we found ourselves in, in a bind again.
And the Impress Fund is used to advance money when people are traveling?
Travel advances.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
It's like a petty cash fund. When was the last time we increased it?
Uh, the last time it was increased was on April of 2002.
Okay, 11 years ago.
Yes.
All right, move to approve.
Move by Commissioner Sanchez, and by Commissioner Gottsa. All in favor, say by by saying aye.
Aye.
Close carries. Item E, consideration approval of authorization for Cameron County Auditor to conduct and certify the audit required by Article 59.06. Commissioner.
Would this audit is in reference to what, all forfeitures?
It's in reference to all, uh, state forfeitures. This is the 5906, uh, forfeiture report that is required by the Attorney General, and it is the report for all law enforcement agencies in Cameron County.
So you'll audit every single department to?
That has forfeiture funds.
That has forfeiture money?
Yes.
Okay. And do you report that back to us, or you just go verify what they have?
Uh, actually, it's an ongoing process that we do throughout the whole year. At the end of the year, we are required to submit this final report, which shows all forfeiture users
...
Is at the end of the year and how much is pending, so. In years past, we had not been, the person preparing the report for submission had not been required to swear that they had been asked to conduct this audit, and now that this form has changed and the statement is in there, to keep it clear and, you know, and to keep in compliance with the way the form is working, I decided and checked with civil that it was best that it come to the court and request it officially for approval.
Okay, good.
I can bring the report back if you wish.
No, I was just wondering, because I know there's certain departments that do have forfeiture monies and others that don't.
Yes.
And that came up when I was visiting with different constable departments. Some had, some didn't, and it's probably, maybe it budgets time or whenever we have issues come up, a good idea for us to know how much is in there and, you know, what their abilities are to help in certain things and what their abilities aren't, and that's why I ask.
Move by Commissioner Sanchez to approve.
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Gottsa, all in favor, seeing by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, Adam Carries. There was another supplemental notice consent regarding travel for JP Mendoza and JP Precinct Four office staff, and also, I don't know if I mentioned on double P, there was a change in the date from November the 5th to November the 4th. Let me have a motion to approve those.
Some moved.
By Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, seeing by saying aye, and opposed, Carries, triple Q. Consideration approval of the August 2013 monthly financial report. Commissioner?
The only reason I pulled this one is we're in October, and these reports are supposed to come to us every month, correct Martha? Do we have any of the other offices that haven't submitted the reports from the previous month? I mean, are we up to date pretty much on these?
We have the September reports obviously still pending. I believe this was the last one that we had.
Okay, so everyone's pretty much caught up?
I know also the JPs with the integration of the Odyssey system and everything, I know that they were having problems generating the report as well. I'd have to check and verify if they have been filed or not.
Okay, but I guess, and I guess with this one, is this report generated by Odyssey?
It should be, yes.
Okay.
They should all be using it.
So all the constables can generate the reports with Odyssey, the JP should be able to do the same thing, right?
As far as I know, yes.
So if they're not getting it done, it's because maybe there's a problem with the computer?
I know you've seen the emails, you've been copying on the email, the court has been copying on the emails this week relative to the problems that the JPs, some particular JP offices are having with the Odyssey reports. They have been shown how to run the report, however, there are still ongoing issues, and I don't, I'm not sure where they are at this point, if they've been resolved.
Okay, and so I guess my concern
I can copy the court and let
If constable precinct four was a computer issue, and why they were, you know, a month behind or whatever, then it kind of makes sense what I'm hearing on the other stuff. If it's not, then it kind of gives me an understanding that the other stuff really is just not necessarily
I believe I saw the constable here, here he is, okay, and maybe he can advise as to why this is coming in right now for August.
Constable, was it a computer issue that?
Sure it was, I know my secretary had been out a little bit, so.
Okay, so it wasn't a computer issue?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I'll double check with her, but I don't believe so.
Okay, if it is a computer issue, would you let us know, please?
Yes, sir.
Because we get some reports that computer is the reason why others or certain departments can't get this done, but if everyone's getting it done, that doesn't really make a lot of sense to me.
No, I'll double check with her and let you know.
But since yours was a little bit late, it could be personnel issue or it could be computer.
Yeah, I'll double check on that.
Thank you. Move to approve, second.
Move by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Gottsa, to approve, all in favor, seeing by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, Adam Carries, but just as a clarification, it's a software issue, right? Not necessarily a, right? Is it a computer issue or it could be a software issue? Software or computer?
I don't know if it could be software.
Okay, all right, okay. I think the issue we're having is with the software, and that seems to be continuing, so. All right, item, item 3A, budget amendments, transfers under salary schedules.
Judge Commissioners, you have the budget amendments in front of you, and we have some for vehicle maintenance, juvenile probation, juvenile detention, for the elections that are being run for Los Angeles School District and La Prairie School District, local operation linebacker, the health grants, boot camp, and the juvenile detention, and one for the DA's office in the Department of Treasury Fund. Those are all budget amendments that are being presented to you. There's also salary schedules for the DA's drug forfeiture fund, you have salary schedules for the juvenile department, and salary schedules for the health department as well, and you've got two schedules for the, for the Hyda Division, a salary schedule from the Sheriff's Department for that reclassification from a secretarial to a deputy position, and I believe those, that should be all of the schedules for your approval.
Questions?
Do you recommend? Yes.
Move by Commissioner Benavides, second.
Second.
By Commissioner Hernandez, discussion.
Quick question, Martha, are there new positions at the DA's office because of the forfeiture money, or is it just increases in salary?
They have a task force initiative that was approved, and in the, they do have a salary schedule, I believe that is being presented for that, on the Hyda Division, this federal funding, and we're establishing the 2014 salary schedule because that had not been submitted. If there's any questions relative to the task forces of the DA's, they do have representatives here that can address the salary schedule.
Well, I was just wondering if there's any, there's no new positions that we would have to carry later if the forfeiture monies ran out, correct?
On the forfeiture funds, they would, the county would not be obligated to carry them.
Okay, that was my only question.
I think, Renee, I think during the budget hearing, you kind of gave us an out this particular year, but you told us that by next year, you're going to be completely out of forfeiture monies in terms of compensation for some of the employees? Right, this fiscal year, but the next year, was it around $300,000? About $300,000? So then you're going to come back to us at some, I guess during the next budget process and figure out how we're going to be able to bridge that gap? Okay. All right, well, just, I know you brought it up during the last budget, so just so we remember this coming budget year.
And that was my concern, if the money's running out and we're creating new positions, but we're going to be out, then that's going to put us further behind.
Well ...
And if the grants end, then those positions end. Okay.
Got it. Okay, I had a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, Carrey's claims?
Claims, warrants number three. 9624 through 310007, 310009 through 310341. Warrants number 310346 through 310477. Contract payments for the month of October are warrants number, I've already read these in, are warrants number 310095 through 310127. Those will be for approval to be released by the court on October the 31st. Those are contract payments for the month of October. Healthcare claims for $454,183.84. Payroll dated October 25th for $1,747,778. Voids are warrants number 308342 for $1,232.46. Warrant number 2995892 for $60. The one for $60 is being voided due to a stale date. The warrant for $1,232.46 is being voided because a vendor waived a specific portion of that invoice, so we are reissuing the check. Warrant number 310008 is being voided pending, the check will be issued payable to another vendor as opposed to as listed in the claims for today. I'd also like the court to go ahead and approve, if you will, the increase in the reimbursed advance check for $15,000. We can run that tomorrow and we can get the funds deposited tomorrow. And there's also an item that's listed for executive session, the claim for El Jardín on that refund that needs to be done to the state. That's for $46,461.43 and that will be discussed in executive session, but the state needs a response by tomorrow. So, subject to the discussion in Commissioner's court's executive session, we would process that reimbursement.